Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Bagley.
Good afternoon, please be seated. Happy New Year to everybody. It's our first meeting of 2024. First, it's National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So as we talked about this morning, every day should be, but today is a day that is recognized. We want to thank our men and women in law enforcement for the work they do for us to keep us safe. Secondly, I'd like to thank the Omaha Public Works Department for the round-the-clock keeping the streets safe the best they can, keeping up with Mother Nature, the round-the-clock work that the local 251 men and women do and others. And lastly, I want to tell a quick story that I think that would bring us well into the new year. My brother is a principal at Blue Stem Middle School in South Omaha, and I had the delight, he invited me, so when Big Brother invites you, you go. And it was for Lifetime Fitness PE students focusing on healthy cities. So I went in the kids and made little displays of what a healthy city looks like. In one of the middle schools, they were all great little designs they had, and one of them, they really took the time to explain, hey, this is my city, what it's going to look like. I got a church, I got a health center, I got a park, I got a lake. And in order, one of the kids, when he showed his display, he said, it was three of them, and they said, in order to live here, you have to be kind. This little community is called Kindsville. So I think going into 2024, from the hearts of middle school students, what they want their community to look like, Kindsville, I think that's a good theme for the year as we go into it. So thanks for coming, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council and to our first meeting of 2024. We appreciate having you here, and we look forward to your comments on our many items. First, we'll start with a presentation by Councilmember Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Whereas Fred Whackerhagen started Friendly Fred Service Station in the mid-1960s with the help of his wife Marilyn, who acted as bookkeeper. And I'm sorry, you guys can come up to the podium, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself there. If you want to please introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Robert. Fred was my dad, and this is my wife Marilyn.
Thanks, I got excited to read this, so I'll start over again. So thanks for coming down today.
Thank you.
Whereas Fred Whackerhagen started Friendly Fred Service Station in the mid-1960s with the help of his wife Marilyn, who acted as bookkeeper, and whereas their sons, Robert and Ron, took over in 1998 and continued their dad's legacy, and whereas Robert and Ronald Whackerhagen are proud that the business has been family-owned for 50 years now, and believe in their dad always saying friendly service is the most important part. Whereas Fred's Friendly Service Station was a next-door neighborhood favorite in 2017, 2020, and 2022, thanks to knowledgeable staff who are willing, who are always willing to help maintain the highest standards of customer service and treat everybody like family. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Omaha officially designates January 9, 2024, as Fred's Friendly Service Station Day in Omaha, Nebraska. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this ninth day of January 2024.
I think Fred's Service Station should have been in all of those kids' friendly cities. That would have been a perfect addition, to have a Fred Service Center in their kindness city.
That could happen, that could happen. But thank you for this award, I really appreciate it, and I wish my dad was here to see this. He loved this town, and he did a lot, he did the downtown cleanup back when it first started, back in the day, and he would just be honored that this is happening for the business he started. Thank you very much.
Robert, if I can, thank you for coming down. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, it gave me the afternoon off. My brother's up there working right now.
And I wanted to say, I had the great pleasure of, when I worked at Lutheran Hospital late 1980s, to go get my van that I drove as a patient escort. You guys would do the maintenance and gas and all the characters that were at that location. Friendly, Fred's Friendly Service, the best name ever. And I know even my next-door neighbor, who was like a grandfather to me when I was a kid, I would mow his lawn and shovel his snow, and he was a circulation manager at the World Harold, and I learned as a kid, your dad worked for him as a carrier.
My dad was a paperboy when he was at that station, so yeah.
Yep, so that was a loyalty of business that I think your dad learned from my next-door neighbor.
Yes, he did.
And he carried that into his business for 50 years, so.
He did, he learned a lot from that man, so yep.
Thank you for coming down, and thanks for your 50 years of great service for the community. We're going to miss you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk. Oh, Mr. Harding.
I think there are a couple other people who wanted to make.
I'm sorry.
It's not like a roast, but.
Okay, we'll see how it is when it's done.
Okay. I'll leave that up to Mr. Hug. Your dad, I first met your dad and your family when I was a teller at Security National Bank a long time ago.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah. But it was, one of the things that I think is truly going to be lost, and it was something that I think just spoke volumes to your family's business, is that, I mean, you were still one of the only places in town that really offered full service. And it wasn't just, you know, they put the gas in the car, they would still do the windows and the whole bit. And that's, I'm aging myself, because a lot of people are probably looking at me like, what the, who does that?
We get that, and they come in now, they don't believe we even do that, and it's like, yeah, we do it, so.
Anyway, thank you for the longtime service your family has dedicated, not only to that area, I mean, that's kind of a landmark place, I think. A lot of people going home from downtown probably went to work on an empty gas tank, and that was about the place where he'd stop before he got back on the interstate to go home.
Yeah. We have a lady comes in, she was coming in as a little girl with her mom, now she comes in, now her kids are coming in, so it's full cycle going around there. It's really neat to see.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hug.
Well, obviously, I'm no stranger to you and your brother. You guys, you know, the past 12, 13 years have been, you know, a great help to me and my business. You know, my worst day, I knew I could count on you guys. Whether it was 20 degrees out and raining, or 100-degree day, you guys were there. But more importantly, I could rely on your family to take care of my family, and you know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
And so, thank you for taking care of my family for the many, many years. I'm going to miss you guys, but I'll find some way to harass your brother, I promise.
I'll give you his phone number. Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Good luck to you guys.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And good luck to the new owner. It's going to be strange not to have these guys in that corner, but I'm going to be looking forward to seeing your vision for that corner. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six to consider a class D liquor license for Let It Fly located at 1311 South 203rd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. My name is David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Ave., 6A124. I am here on behalf of the applicant Let It Fly Nebraska LLC, which will be the second Let It Fly location, and it's proposed to be located at 1311 South 203rd Street. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. David?
Yes.
Sorry. Just a couple of quick items. I had a couple of calls from, you know, neighbors who were supportive of the application, which I am as well too, but wanted me to at least make sure it was on the record that, you know, this is not going to be like the previous license holders establishment. It's, I mean, the Let It Fly people are very reputable, run a good operation, not going to be having the pool parties and the loud bass and things like that. That's kind of a leading question, but I know the answer.
That's correct, I appreciate the question. The business model is going to be different, it's going to be more of a traditional sports bar, so if you're familiar with the current Let It Fly location, that's located on the Marriott Development Property, it should look and feel a lot like that property.
Yeah.
So the owners are very responsible operators, and we think that they've got a great product, and we're excited for them to be in business out there.
Yeah, I think it'll be a great addition, so.
Thank you, council member.
Move to approve.
Motion, a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item seven, to consider a class D liquor license for Voodoo Taco located at 1102 Harney Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
David Houghton, on behalf, 2804 South 87th Ave., 6A124, on behalf of Voodoo Taco Old Market LLC. I believe that we need to request a layover, if that's fine. We're working out something with the finance department, and would like to take care of that before we bring it before the council.
Okay. Are you requesting two weeks, or how?
Whenever the council next meets, I think would be plenty of time for us.
Okay. First, we'll see if there's any other proponents. Seeing none any opponents.
Louis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I am opposing this because I've gone to the establishment, experienced the business model, and I think they treat it as a cash cow. They treat tacos as a cash cow. You don't really need a beer for a taco, or any alcoholic beverage. Taco is the main attraction. And that's my idea. I don't think that this business invests in its property. I think that they need to do a better job at monitoring and security, security for the exterior, not just the interior, but the exterior. And I'm not going to get into the details why I think that, but I've been there, and I'm not going to go back. And if they're treating this business as a cash cow, it's a disservice to their customers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm not going to close public hearing, depending upon what the council wants to do with this request. Are there any lights?
Yeah. Motion to layover. And revisit this on January 16. Did you want the 16th or the 23rd?
We don't need a 16th.
Oh, 23rd.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So January 23rd?
January 23rd would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
There's a motion to layover and continue public hearing on the 23rd. And a second, there's no further lights. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item eight, to consider a class D liquor license for Hawaii Fluid Art of Omaha located at 715 North 132nd Street, A is communication opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. We have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Triplet. Go ahead.
Yes, I am applying for a liquor license. I'm opening up a kind of a paint and sip concept art studio off 132nd Dodge.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. And Mr. Triplet, I did, we have your name and address for the record here, but can you say it out loud for us, please?
The site address is 71.
Your address, your name and address.
Yes, David Triplet, 18314 Mina Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68130.
All right, thank you. Public hearing is closed, there's no further lights. Motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Item nine, to consider a class D liquor license for Panda House located at 301 South 16th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. We also have this applicant by Zoom, Ernesto and Andrea James. Get you off mute here in a second. All right, try that.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Our address is 1125 Stone Creek Drive, Blair, Nebraska, 68008. We are applying for a liquor license for the Panda House at 301 South 16th Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve in a second, no further lights. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 10, to consider a class D liquor license for NP Mart 23 located at 2901 Leavenworth Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Dave Houghton, 2804 South 87th Ave., 6A124, here on behalf of the applicant Midtown Petroleum LLC doing business is NP Mart 23. The proposed location will be at the former Fred's Friendly Service, and they hope to carry on their great legacy down there at 2901 Leavenworth Street, 68105. Because this application concerns a property in East Omaha, my client has been proactive in reaching out to the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association, Inc. Common, which is a neighborhood association that's located in the PANA Association, and has taken a lot of input from the neighborhood. As a result, they don't intend to sell any single-serving malt beverages under 32 ounces or any single-serving shooters at that location. In addition, they want to make it clear to the council that they intend to operate as a traditional gas station and C store. They're going to make, they anticipate an investment in the location of 1.6 to 1.7 million dollars. I think it's, we also wanted to point out, they'll be serving hot, fresh food at that location, as well as fresh fruit and vegetables and packaged vegetables and fruit. If the council has any questions at all, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. David, can you come back down? Thanks. Good afternoon, thanks for coming down today.
Good afternoon.
And I appreciate your client and your outreach to Inc. Common and the Neighborhood Association. We did get an email from the president of the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association, and he had some concerns about, you addressed part of them in your remarks. I think it's great that you want to sell fruit and vegetables, hot food, canned packaged fruits and vegetables, which, alcohol is not the primary reason for this business, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And in your conversations, or email rather, to the Neighborhood Association, one of the things that was brought up is having maybe the sidewalks widen for pedestrian access points, and there was also some concerns about bike lane safety. So I know, if you want to speak for your client on how you guys would address that.
Yeah, I think my client shares Leavenworth Association's concern about pedestrian traffic, so they'd like to make this as safe as possible. What the Leavenworth Association president has weighed in on is that he'd like to see a little bit of an expanded sidewalk area, I think on the Leavenworth side of the property. And my client will certainly work with his designers and the planning office in Omaha to make sure that they can do that to the best of their ability.
Okay.
Insofar as the bike lanes.
Okay, yep, I'll cover that part. That's the part I wanted answered from you. And obviously, he wants to be supportive, is a new business that is invested, is at 1.7 or so million dollars.
Thereabouts, yeah.
In that great 50-year business of Fred's Friendly Service to continue as an anchor and investment in that neighborhood, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And assuming your client will want to reach out and belong and be supportive of the Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, the idea is, although it's in the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association, I think they also intend to join PANA because they expect a lot of their customers and the community is so close. And like I said, we were able to meet with Inc. Common about a month back, and it's my client's intent, as with all of his locations, to be actively involved in the adjacent neighborhood associations.
Okay, and I appreciate that meeting I wasn't able to make in December that you guys have, and you and I have spoken several times, and I've been pleased with the outreach and the answers you provided. So I got a question that I'll, this is for Mr. Stube in Public Works.
Bob Stube, Public Works.
Bob, is somebody on your staff available to answer some questions on the bike lane?
Absolutely. Jeff Rieselman, traffic engineer, is here.
Thanks.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jeff Rieselman, city traffic engineer.
Jeff, Happy New Year, good afternoon, good to have you here. There was just, can you just give some thoughts on, that's not a protected bike lane on Leavenworth Street. In the Neighborhood Association, they're very pro-bike, as many of us are. What are the safety concerns, if any, on the traffic that'll be pulling into this new establishment there if this is approved today?
Well, with the bike lane, it is a buffered bike lane, so it's a little bit wider, and it has a little bit of a space, additional space between the vehicle traffic and the bicycle traffic. We did check crash history, and there are no crashes involving bicyclists in the bike lane. It is a mixing zone, we recognize that. This is an area where a lot of traffic is accessing the interstate, so, and there are two one-way streets. It's eastbound only on Leavenworth and southbound only on 29th. So there's a lot of eastbound right turns which mix, or need to transition or encroach into the bike lane. And despite that, we're not seeing any crashes involving bikes.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Rieselman.
Yep.
Thanks. I don't have any other questions, Mr. President, I know there's others in the queue, but I'll make a motion to support this today. Thanks.
Okay. Motion in a second? And does that include the restrictions that were discussed?
Yes, it does.
Do we need to make that clear for the record, too?
Yeah, we'll edit it.
Okay. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
I have just one question. Are you being 24 hours?
Answer the question. Councilmember, we, at this time, the anticipated hours would be 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
David? I know you're kind of new to doing this.
I'll stay up.
Yeah, I was going to say, a lot of times, maybe sit down there for a while. Actually, I'm glad it was asked just a minute ago about the restrictions, so could you go over, because in the application, I didn't see the operating statement. I think there was a PDF attachment that's not showing right now that says business activity, so maybe that's where it was, but could you restate what the restrictions are that the owners agreed to on the sale of?
The sale of would be no beers or single malt, or, not single malt, malt beverages under 32 ounces, and no liquor shooters, so like the airplane bottles of shooters. The idea is, I think, for the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association is in some ways litter, but also want to be sensitive to the fact that they don't want to encourage and.
Use it as a refrigerator.
Exactly, exactly.
When you say under 32, so I'm assuming, because a lot of those come in 32 ounces, so those would be sold as singles, 32 ounces?
I, my understanding is it's, and I'll clarify this with my client, but it would be any 32 ounces and under.
Okay, could you clarify that, because that's why I wanted to bring that up?
That's correct, yes.
32 and under? Okay, for the record, then. Just wanted to make sure we had those restrictions on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that is your motion, right, Mr. Bagley?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion, a second, no further lights. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 11, to consider a liquor license addition application for Tupelo Honey Southern Kitchen and Bar to add an outdoor area located at 830 Harney Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Tyler Johnson with Fraser Stryker, 500 Energy Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102, appearing on behalf of applicant Tupelo Honey Hospitality Corporation. This addition application pertains to a outdoor patio space. This patio space was actually a part of our original application. However, at the time, applicant wanted to open up shop, the patio wasn't quite constructed yet, so the commission asked us to submit this addition application, so we prepared and submitted this. Nothing's changed since the original application with respect to the patio space. It was just simply a construction delay. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item 12, to consider a class D liquor license for Everest Gas Mart located at 5188 Leavenworth Street, A is communication and support, B is communication opposition, C is a copy of resolution 2017-0823 with conditions.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Nicole Kavanaugh, 1905 Harney, Suite 708, Omaha, 68102. I am here representing Tmoo LLC, doing business at Everett Gas Mart. My client is present today. I'm just here to see if you have any questions. I did just initially, I provided copies of an email that I sent out last week with some information, additional information with regards to that application, and then I also provided a picture today. I have an additional picture that shows more of the signage being cleaned up. I've been told I have to use this machine next to me, I'm not sure that I will.
Yeah, if you just move the arm up like this.
I've been known to break some things, so.
Push the arm up like that, and then it'll show it, if you just want to place it on the platform there, there you go. All the way up.
Oh, look at that.
And on top of that is a zoom in, zoom out button. Okay.
I'm not sure what the marks are, I'm sure that's my error, but.
Do you want to use this one, Miss Kavanaugh? This one's clearer.
I think it's actually, oh. It was snowing, I don't know.
Yeah, this one.
It almost looks like the screen.
I think it's the screen, but raise the arm more.
Yeah.
So the picture that I copied and presented is just showing that that's the awning and the new gas pumps that have been installed since my client purchased the property. And then this one shows to the council just that the windows have been cleaned up, the And then this one shows to the council just that the windows have been cleaned up, the removal of some of just the language that was at the top, he's moved some signs that were, I think, a concern, because they were blocking just the view to the clerk. So, I just wanted to provide an update as far as what he's done just recently to improve the appearance of the property, and I think probably just overall the safety. You can also see that he does have a working security system, and I can tell you those lights are very bright, and he does run those lights throughout the night to try to keep the neighborhood safe as well. And so, if you have any questions, I don't know if you have any questions for me, or...
I think we will, we'll get some lights on here in a minute, but if you're done with your presentation, I'll ask for other proponents.
Okay.
Okay. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon, my name is Jim McGee, MCGEE, 5225 Jackson. I live probably four houses from Everest, I think since its kindness day here at the city council. Mr. Garang is one of the kindest, most decent people you'll ever meet. And I'm proud to come down here. I do not drink, I may be the only Irishman in the world that doesn't drink. Nonetheless, I still don't object to having a liquor license so close to my home. I'm proud to have Mr. Garang as a businessman neighbor, and everything that he does in the neighborhood, you'll hear nothing but kind remarks. I liked some of the remarks I've seen from the councilman today on putting controls on some of these types of facilities in Omaha. I know there's a lot of complaints, the closer you get when there's single shot liquor, you start seeing litter, litter. But in this case, Mr. Garang closes at 10:00 p.m., and I don't anticipate any promise, problems. I believe anything, any conditions you put on him, that he will comply with, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? All right. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed, Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Kavanaugh, some questions for you or your client. Good afternoon, thanks for coming down, and I appreciate the time that you took to spend with me last week to go through, on behalf of your client, some concerns that I had, that I still have. So, back in 2017, Mr. McGee, my friend, my constituent, the historian of Omaha in District Three, had mentioned that he lives right by this, this establishment here, and the conditions that'll comply with conditions and controls that were put in place. Before, many of us were on the city council back in May of 2017, your client had a list of conditions that he signed in order to get his license at that time with the Dundee Memorial Park Neighborhood Association. One of them was, the number one on that, that's in the documentation on this attachment for this item, was a Class B licensed beer-only off-sale with the restriction that there will be no single can sales. Number two was no application for an upgrade of the license to Class D, which is beer, wine, and liquor, which is what he is asking for today. So, back a year after this agreement was signed by your client, he went against this and tried to upgrade to a D at that time, and the council at that time voted no on it because of the agreement that he had made with the neighborhood association. Some of the neighbors went down to Lincoln after the city council denied it, and your client didn't show up in Lincoln, some neighbors did, that wanted to hold his agreement in place, that he agreed to, and I know I, I did a request to see if there's been any police calls here in that time from when he entered into this agreement to now, and the only thing that has come up that I can recall, nothing stood out, that I think he's done a good job of running his business, that it's safe, but I, I believe the reason for that is, is because of the conditions that my predecessor on the council got a signed agreement with your client. So, some of the things that, besides the upgrade to a D that was agreed to, that your client wouldn't do that, he tried to do it a year later, and it wasn't agreed to. He's back here today trying to upgrade it. Some of the things we talked about were, in the agreement that he had, were the window signs wouldn't cover more than 40% of the windows, that's been cleaned up. The dumpster shall be covered and not be visible from the street in compliance with the City of Omaha garbage ordinance. I was provided some pictures from one of my constituents, and I verified those pictures were sent on December 27th and 218. It showed the dumpster wasn't covered, the windows were completely blocked, and I think part of the reason for that, to have those windows open in that agreement, was a safety thing for people that are in the establishment. They also said that the snow doesn't get shoveled, I'm not, you know, if it's shoveled in 24 hours, but I do got concerns with the agreement that was originally made and signed by your client. A year later, he tried to reverse that, and it was denied. And again, I, I, all accounts are that your client, nice, kind neighbor, does a good job, but why, you're here before us today, why do you think now is the time to upgrade that license and go back on the agreement that he's violated before, and even up to last week, where he hasn't met the conditions of that agreement until this was coming before us, and then he kind of cleaned it up? I know that's a lot to digest, but I, the floor is yours.
I'll do, I'll do my best, I'll take it in pieces. So, going back to the agreement, that was in 2017, I believe, or, sorry, and I don't know how often, I'm, obviously, you all don't see my face here very often, I don't know how often that happens, that there is an agreement that is so limiting for a business owner, I don't know if that's something very common, I just heard four people come in, one of them, I, I love Fred's, too, I don't know where I'm gonna go, the person who purchased his property is going to, did not have a restriction on what kind of alcohol he can sell. I, I, I mean, to beer only, and that he can never go and apply for an additional license, it seems very limiting for a business owner. There's no date certain, you can come back in three years if you've done well, if you're compliant, six months would seem appropriate, but it was sort of an indefinite amount of time. The reason you're hearing, and I can attest, I also, I've lived in the neighborhood for 50 years, that's part of why I'm here, very close to the Gas Mart, and Mr. Garang is, is very kind and very accommodating, and, and speaking to him after you asked me the question, he indicated that a lot of the neighbors asked, well, why didn't you, we'd like to go, there's a, there's an elderly community of condos, as you all know, right there, they want to walk across the street, can we just buy a bottle of wine, can we? So, he said, okay, okay, I'll see what I can do, and then he, after he did the application and he was here, he realized that he needed to do some more work with the neighborhood association. I don't want to say that he didn't maybe fully understand the agreement in that, I don't, I don't know if he had counsel, or if that person didn't explain it to him very well, but I can tell you, I did, and he certainly was like, okay, yes, let's, I, I want to get, see what I need to do here, I want to be in compliance. So, I, I guess I'm taking it out of steps. One, the agreement is concerning to me, I guess, just overall, the restrictions on, on what he's gonna sell and things of that sort, that seems appropriate to me. He does not want to sell the shooters, he doesn't want, the liquor and wine will be behind the counter, he wants it to be a safe, and, and he obviously wants to make sure only the appropriate people have access to it. The, the limits that were set, I think are, I guess, inappropriate and, and just overreaching. So, that being said, in the next year when he applied, it was at the request of the neighborhood, after he realized that the neighbor, he needed to do some more work, I think that's why, he did not go forward with the appeal. I'm not sure if he was here, I don't know that he would have known how to withdraw it. And so, he waited, and then, and so now, six years later, he has not applied again. He has done improvements, he, I, I, he moved the bathrooms that used to be outside, he put, he built new bathrooms on the inside, so people weren't trying to get in there, and the security system is, is high-tech, he can see every little thing about every person that approaches that building 24 hours a day, put in a new HVAC system, he has, the gas stations are, pumps are new, and all the things that are new, that all happened in six years, and probably most importantly, he hasn't had any violations of his license, there have not been police calls to that location, and he is committed to try to make it a safe place for his neighbors. And I think Mr. McGee is telling you that today, because if you stand 15 minutes outside a shop, everybody's gonna walk in and say, hi, Netra, good morning, how you doing today? And he knows their name. He gives them what they need if they want coffee, he answers questions on what they need to know. And so, I mean, I, I, so I think after the six years is way too long to find somebody, first of all, on how they can, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate, on if, whether they can reapply to a liquor license, and part of that is so he can come here and show you all that he's done, and make you all feel comfortable with giving him that license. I don't know, Commissioner Bagley, what I missed, because I probably went on a little too much there, but.
That's okay.
If, if I answered all the questions, or?
You did, no, I, I, I'm sorry, I should have broke that down, I'm not a smart lawyer like you, I kind of threw it all out there, but you did an excellent job of covering everything that I had asked.
And I forgot to mention, I know it was also submitted, but I provided another copy, those are 50 signatures that he just, people signed walking in the door, nobody went around to neighbors, those were people that walked in his door and signed that petition and support today.
The petition that is on the attached record here, the 50 signatures, I'm curious, did, did your client hold the conditions that he entered into with the city in 2017 when people were signing? I'm just curious, did, if I'm gonna sign this, if the petition is to say, hey, I would, customer, Ms. Kavanaugh, that comes in, will you sign this, I want to upgrade to sell spirits and wine? And you're a good customer, you say, of course I will. Did your client say, by the way, Ms. Kavanaugh, in 2018, for full disclosure, 2017, I had an agreement with the city council, part of the conditions that the neighborhood association and I entered into that your client signed? Did the people that signed that know about that?
I guess, I don't, I, I can't answer that.
That's okay.
But I would say, these are the neighbors and the neighborhood association, I mean, the agreements with the neighbors, and these are the neighbors saying, I want you to add this, too, I want access to this, and I want you to expand your liquor license. I mean, I, I see that agreement, not with a person, but with the neighborhood, and that's what I think the petition shows you.
Okay, that's, I, I appreciate that, and again, thanks for your time in helping me understand the position of your client. I know you, you understand I have concerns that predate my time on the council, and I also have heard, not from the 50 people that signed your petition, but from people in the neighborhood that I've talked to that remember, and by the way, the police calls that have been cleaned up, I think a lot of that has to do frankly with the agreement that your client entered into with the city at that time for the neighborhood association. That had to make a good impact on that.
So, I, what, are the improvements that he's done, I, I would agree.
I'm talking about the police, I'm sorry, the police calls that.
Right.
Prior to that, there was a lot of issues.
Right. And I would say, too, to that councilman, that they, I, because I've been in the neighborhood, I think my guess is the reason why that agreement was put in place, because he had just purchased that building when he agreed to those conditions, was concerns because of previous owners. Those, those incidents didn't happen while he owned that property. And so, I think it's pretty telling that since he's owned the property, that there haven't been, one of those incidents was somebody broke in to steal an ATM, that didn't have anything to do with liquor. One of them was a clerk that was shot, I believe, she knew that individual, that didn't have anything with to do. I do appreciate, I did read the Good Neighbor Ordinance I'm preparing for today, and I appreciate that you're, that everybody's worried about if we start selling these, you know, the spirits and the wine, that it will maybe produce that kind of traffic. He closes at 10 o'clock, again, as a reminder, but I, I think his showing of six years of having and building that relationship in the neighborhood and trying to keep that location safe is why you should consider granting his application.
Okay, I don't have any other questions, thanks, Ms. Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, Ms. Kavanaugh and the applicant. I just wanted to put it on the record, or it's worth noting, that you guys did a very wonderful job with engaging the community, the neighborhood. You did, you went beyond what is acceptable or required here, so I just wanted to make sure that you understood that, that's very much appreciated.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Did you want to hear from my client, council, I didn't?
Only if a council member requests so. So, for now, we'll recognize Ms. Melton.
Don't, don't leave the podium, Ms. Kavanaugh. No, thank you, and, so I was on the council in 2017, so I remember this well, and I was actually on the law committee back then as well, so I remember discussing, and I remember the issues, I remember when the clerk was, was shot, and it was very unfortunate. I think that we were very sensitive to the issues that were happening at that location, and I know the location well, I lived on 56th and Leavenworth, go all the way through law school, and used to walk down to Walner's to be able to get food and, you know.
Groceries, yes.
And, you know, on a Saturday night, a bottle of wine in the middle of law school sometimes was helpful, right? So, I know the neighborhood very well, and I was very sensitive to what had gone on before, so it really, a lot of these conditions weren't because of your client, it was because of the history of this business. And I, I supported, by the way, I, I voted yes to approve it with the conditions. I think over six years, there have been some issues, which he didn't necessarily uphold, because I think some of the signs in the windows, although cleaned up recently, the fact that we were putting them up, I would want some, at least I would like to keep some of the conditions here, even though it's part of our city ordinance, he was violating the city ordinance.
Right.
We shouldn't actually have to have them as conditions, but I would like to reiterate them as conditions, and so when I go through the original ones, I'm looking at, I'm looking at numbers five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. I mean, the, those are all part, most of it is part of our city ordinances anyway, so I would hope, but I would like to reiterate that he needs to follow the city ordinances because he's violated them since then. I think what upset me, at least back then, was the fact that he agreed to the conditions and then literally turned around and went down to the liquor commission and to try and basically override what he had agreed with us on, so that's, but, that was also in 2018, so I would have to agree with your argument of how long is it indefinitely that you have these conditions, when since that time, other than some of the sign violations in the window, which are very concerning, and it trashes up the neighborhood.
Yes.
And I'm fairly certain all of the people that signed this, saying, we're fine with him having the alcohol, would probably also sign something that says, but we don't want the trashy signs in the windows, you know, or on the poles, and I get it, convenience marts are doing it all over the city, it doesn't make it right, it still trashes up the, the, the area, so I would really like him to commit to that.
Okay.
And I, if he would commit to the no singles and nothing 32 ounces or less, which is a very common stipulation that we ask of for many owners, I guess I don't see a difference between selling a bottle of wine and a six-pack of beer. I, I mean, I, I do think that having a larger bottle of alcohol where his store's not being used as what we call the refrigerator for the neighborhood, that I, I don't see a difference. I do think that potentially minus some of the smaller issues, he's earned it, but I want commitments, and not commitments that he just makes today, and then six runs from now, he doesn't care what he said in front of us. But, but also, you, you weren't, you weren't his attorney.
Right.
Back then, and so I'm going to kind of hold you on the hook that when I drive by there and I see it, I may give you a call and say, he put signs back up in the window, call, like, can you please get him to follow through with his commitments? And if he's serious about that, I would, I would actually support expanding it with the condition of no singles and, and I would say no 32 ounces or less, like Mr. Harding had kind of defined in the last one to make sure that that was clear. Like Mr. Harding had kind of defined in the last one to make sure that that was clear.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please do.
Um, he definitely agrees to both. He actually has no intention of selling either the shots or the under the third. I think I used the wrong amount, 'cause I, uh, it's my, an experience with, with the bottle sizes are. But yeah, under the 32, um, and I, uh, I too agree that it was congested on, on the windows. I think that it was a lot of, as you know, the reps show up and say, "There's putting," and so, I, I am now committed. I, I live in the neighborhood. They will not be on the windows, whatever, whatever that is worth, they won't. But, um, I, we had a really good talk about how you can manage that with your reps of, you just can't do that.
Well, you might tell the reps, um, "I won't be able to sell your product if you wanna put that up in my window."
So, that seems maybe really obvious to everybody here, but I don't know that it was so apparent to, um, my client, Mr. Guring, to say, you know, "No, we can't. I'll just have," you know, they have all those incentives. Not that he doesn't know that, but I don't intend to downplay that. But I mean, just to, to keep that window clean, um, 'cause that's essentially what it came down to, so.
Right, and even for security. You wanna be able to see who's coming in and out. I mean, I, I, I just think for-
Perfect, yes.
-the security of his own staff-
Yes.
-he would wanna do that as well.
I would agree. And I noticed that Dundee, the gas station up there, does sell wine and alcohol as well. And so, I think then, and that's a good example of, you know, keeping that open too as well.
Right, and they do a very good job of keeping it clean and nice and, you know, non-offensive. 'Cause nobody in that neighborhood, I think, wants those big-
No.
-alcohol signs there, so.
So, yes, you have my and his, if you want him to come up, agreement. And I would not be opposed to putting that into, or continuing those conditions.
Okay, and I, I do think, um, if we do that, there's another council member, I think, in the queue. But before we, we vote on it, um, I would, I would like to call him up.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Not that we don't, not that we don't take lawyers' words for things, but it's always good to come right from the client to have the, the applicant actually on the record accepting it.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Ms. Kavanaugh. I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Nicole, I'll have something for you in a minute, but, um, first, is there any time? What's the time on this?
I know, I'm-
No, 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 I meant on, for application purposes.
Um, there is not time to lay it over.
Okay, and the reason I ask that is because I, I'm, I'm kind of in agreement with Ms. Melton on, on maybe making some modifications to this. I hate doing it on the fly, but if we don't have the time, that might be just what we have to do. So, I've got a number of questions for you, Nicole, and, um, so bear with me. I, I think the, it, I, that's frequently my route down here, um, on Tuesdays and, and other days. And I too notice that it's, wasn't until kinda recently that the signs were removed. So, I, I appreciate the, the, the attempt to, to take them down. I wish it would've done, been done sooner, but, um, uh, and I, did, did he, and I don't, it wasn't one of the, um, I don't think it was one of the requirements, um, but did, did he ever join the Neighborhood Association?
Yeah, I meant actually let you speak to, he, um, or, oh, we lost, oh, Jim May, because he, I know he's reached out on, by email, I, to, to engage with the Neighborhood Association. I was just, uh, discussing with him how he can actually become a member so that he's not cut off of communication. So, um, is he an actual, I, I-
I can't answer that.
Sorry, I can't speak out off the record here, but yeah.
And I'm not gonna, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna add on to maybe what Ms. Melton had for requirements or clarify as well, but I'm not gonna make that a requirement, but I would certainly encourage it.
Absolutely, I, I, we, I did discuss that with him and he would, he knows everybody's name anyway, so I think it would be.
Is, is this his only store?
Yes.
Okay, um, and then I, I totally agree with you on, when, when this was done, and I understand the, the reasons, and I remember, um, Councilman Jerram's reasons, I think, if I can talk for him, since he's not here, um, at least in part, the reasons were because of the past issues that there had been with the property. I think there was someone that was actually killed there. And it, it was not a well-operated, um, uh, it was not a well-operated business. And, and kinda talked a little bit about that earlier too. We had another liquor license holder who is no longer in business and have a, a new operator coming in, and, and they are well-established and have a good track record. And, and, you know, so I, I think that, I think that means a lot. And, and we've got six years of a track record at this point. And I think he's running a good establishment. I think the, the police calls to, or lack thereof really, um, speak to that. Uh, so I think that's, that's all favorable too. And, and I don't remember if, if Mr. Guring had, um, representation that day or not, but, um, to, to make that agreement with, without kind of a, a timeline or a deadline on it, I think. You know, I, I think at some point, to ask for a reconsideration of that is in line. Maybe it wasn't the year, I would agree with that. But, um, certainly now with, with six years or so of a track record, I think, I, I'm willing to consider that.
Thank you.
So, one of the things, I, I guess, uh, one, one other thing is just hypothetically, and I hate hypotheticals, but, um, if this business were to be sold and a new owner came in and was asking of, like, a new application, I think we would, as a council, be open to having those considerations. So, in essence, I think that's kind of what, how I'm trying to look at it is, i- i- if, if this were a new application, and with this owner's track record, I would certainly take that into consideration when, when looking at that request. Um, so I, I wanna ask you a couple of things. The, the original 12, which I'll get to in a second, I wanna add some, maybe take some off, but I wanna throw these out to you for your consideration. I don't know if it's in the operating statement, but I know it's been said a couple of times that he closes at 10:00 PM.
He actually closes at 9:00. I think I misstated, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would, would he be willing to continue that, to make that a part or a requirement of, and I'll even go to 10 o'clock?
Um, I would have to talk to him, but I, 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 I would have to ask if you want me to bring him up. I, he's never mentioned any other time, so.
All right, well, let's, let's make a list, so then we can-
He's willing to-
What's that?
Yes, he is judge willing to, uh, judge, sorry, council.
Good boy, yeah.
Sorry.
You got the wrong guy on that one.
Uh, yes.
I'm usually on the other side.
I know, I'm sorry, habit. Um, so, yes, he's-
And not as an attorney.
He is, he is willing to, uh, agree to that condition.
Okay, and, and I did say 10, so I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at, at 10. If someone wants to change that, that's fine. Um, I also heard you say something about that he would, um, have the liquor behind the counter.
So, his plan is to have it behind, basically, so that it's not out where other people have access. If you wanted to purchase the wine or the liquor, the spirit, whatever, that you would have to ask the clerk to get it, give it to you. And that protects him and, you know, the store as well, so that's-
I, I actually like that one a lot. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, because I, I like that. So, I would make, I would also include that as a requirement.
Uh, and I would have to ask him again, I mean, that's what his intention is, I-
I think I heard, I, I saw a thumbs up, but I, I-
Oh, okay. I mean, I know that's what he wants to do. I hate limiting sometimes, 'cause I feel we're gonna be back here and then-
No, and I understand, because I, and that's, because there's a lot of shelf space that, you know, for, especially for, for wine and I-
Except the white wine should probably be kept refrigerated.
I know, that's what I'm thinking. There's gonna be some-
So, I, I, let me, let me do it this way, I think, that the, that the spirits-
Yes.
Spirits would have to be behind the counter or secured such that the clerk would have to, uh, someone help me out with the words, uh, the clerk would have the only access to it to give to the customer. But the wine, I guess, certainly because, I know Ms. Melton's, must be a white wine drinker, if she knew that.
No, I just know that it needs to be kept.
She just heard that from someone.
Anyway, so I would, I would make that a requirement.
Okay.
I'm suggesting that as a requirement. Um, hold on a second, I wanna, um, oh, I wanted to go back on the windows. It, it did seem like the, the signs were down now, but it does look like there's still some blackout on, on some of those. And I think, again, the reason that we like to have those clear is so that, for security purposes.
So, those are actually the back of coolers.
Okay.
Um, and so, uh, we, it, he's not a-
Is that more, I, not that we're, we don't know the answer to this today, but if that's more than 40%, and I, maybe it's not, when you count the, the entry and the rest of the windows. But I would say if, if that's the case-
Okay.
-then he's not gonna be able to have really any signage in those windows.
Right.
I'm not, again, I'm, I'm not gonna change that requirement, I'm gonna keep it the same.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate that and we'll work on that.
Okay.
Um, councilman.
So, now, um, so with, with, I guess, my two additional requirements, that being the, about where the, the spirits can be stored, or how the spirits will be handled, um, as well as the wine, um, and then the, the time of closing. Those are my two new requirements. So, I would, I guess I would, I would then amend the number one of the conditions for liquor license for Valero at 5188 Leavenworth Street that was dated May 1st, 2017, um, that would be, uh, it would be a Class D license, but with the restrictions that there'd be no single can sales of 32 ounces and under, as well as no single shot or airplane bottles of, of spirits. Um, I would remove number two. And then, um, I think I would keep-
Mr. Harding, I thought I interrupted you, but-
Yeah.
This would be, this would be a new amendment you're proposing, so you would, you would not be amending these. I would propose it as a new amendment.
Okay, yeah, okay, let me do it that way then. I would propose a new amendment that would incorporate the, the agreement from May 1st of 2017. And, and it would be, I would keep the items, one, as I just discussed, it, it would be a Class D license, but with the restriction of no single can sales of 32 ounces or less. And no, um, sale of, of the so-called airplane bottles of liquor. I would rem, I would not have any restriction on the, um, uh, that, uh, an upgrade for a separate license, or a different license. Um, I wouldn't have that one in there. And then three through 12, I would keep. And then, as I mentioned, the, the other two is the, the, how the spirits are to be stored, um, for sale. And, and that the wine could be not behind the counter and in coolers. Um, and then the 10 o'clock closing. Sorry, that's very, very messy and sloppy, but, yes, Ms. Melton.
May I, oh, thank you. The only, the only issue that I would have, the reason I didn't include number three, um, because I think, first of all, figuring out what a percentage of shelf space is, is very difficult. And second, we're allowing him to add, um, wine and liquor. And so, since he's adding, I think it may be very difficult for him to keep his shelf space being 20% or less. And I, and I'll be honest, I, that's a very rare, in fact, I haven't seen it. So, that's the only one that I think would be problematic, since we're at, letting him add alcohol.
Okay, and I would, I would agree with you. I think we have used it in other places before, but I think it was actually a higher percentage. But, so, so my amendment of, to make it even more sloppy and messy is, I, I guess it would be items four through 12 from the original agreement would be incorporated into a new, um, con, um, list of conditions. Is that messy enough for everyone to understand?
Right, I, you, I think what you had said is it's four through 12, which is what I suggested. And then, then we're just asking him to, um, limit his Class D to the no single cans, 32 or under, and no single shots.
Cans or bottles.
Cans or bottles.
Yeah.
So, I, I, to me, if that's a-
And a 10:00 PM closing.
And a 10:00 PM closing.
And a 10:00 PM closing would be in addition to that.
Yeah.
So, if that's-
And how the spirits are to be stored.
And then the spirits to be stored behind the counter.
Yes.
So, is that a motion that you're making?
That is a motion if, if-
Is it a motion to approve with conditions?
Yes, motion to approve with conditions.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion to approve with those conditions, and there's a second. Was there, were there for lights on, or there were, for a moment? Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Um, thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Kavanaugh, I did talk to, um, the Dundee Memorial Park Neighborhood Association, and you can confirm for me if you heard the same thing. They were opposed to this originally, and I believe their position is neutral now. Is that what your understanding is?
Yes, my understanding is, I did talk to John Ashford, who is the current president of the Neighborhood Association. Um, he is personally, I put in the letter that as members, that he was supporting it, um, but-
Sorry, can I stop right there? You said, "He personally is supporting it?"
As a mem, just him personally.
Individually.
Individually, yes.
Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to make sure I heard.
Yeah, I know, I wanted to make sure that's clear. You, he, as an individual, supports it. So, as a member of that association, he does. But overall, they have, they're neutral as to it. Um, I talked to Jen Bauer, who is the president of the Exarban Neighborhood Association. She personally is not opposed to it, but they did not vote on it because they did not get notice. Uh, I don't, it must be the location, but, so they were going to defer to the Dundee Memorial Neighborhoods.
Thanks for clarifying that, because I also, I didn't get to talk to Jim, but we texted back and forth. And that, that does reflect our position that, I, I'm not speaking for her, but their Neighborhood Association, she said they would kind of follow the lead of what Dundee Memorial Park wanted to do. But I, I am opposed to the amendments. I was gonna make a motion to deny the license, but we can vote on, uh, Councilmember Harding's amendments. Um, again, I, I wanted to be clear that I, I don't have any ill will towards your client. All accounts are that he's, tries and wants to run a, a good business. But to me, when you sign something and you have conditions, that has to mean something. If somebody approaches me as a council member today and the agreement that's signed and agreed, it's violated, then to me, it's, the councils, the councils vote and the agreement with the Neighborhood Association has to mean something. So, again, I appreciate all your time that you've given me to help me understand. Um, and, and your client, I wish him continued success, but I wouldn't vote to support this license as proposed today, and I'm gonna vote against the amendment as well. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hug.
Uh, just kind of a point of order, Housekeeping. Do we have to vote on the amendment before we vote on it?
There is no amendment.
There is no amendment, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Melton?
Yes, I would just ask the applicant to come down now that the-
Yes.
That there is a motion and a second. Could you have your client come down just to confer? I would like him to confirm on the record that he agrees to, um, all of the conditions that we have put on here.
Yes, of course.
Hello, my name is Netra Guring, and I'm the owner of, uh, Temu LLC DBA Everest Gas Mart.
And could you give, provide us your address, please?
Uh, 5188 Leavenworth Street, Oman, Nebraska, 68106.
And did, did you hear what we, um, what Mr. Councilman Harding-
Yeah, I'm agree with that.
-put on there, uh, on the record? And you agree with keeping four through 12, and then you agree to close at 10?
10 o'clock, yeah. It's the winter time, we close 9 o'clock, and summer, we close 10 o'clock, yeah.
Okay, and you understand that what's really important too, in addition, is-
Yeah.
You know, you agreed to things before, and that's what Councilman Begley is, you know, is saying that he's upset about. You agreed to that with his predecessor. And, and by the, by the way, myself, and I voted for your liquor license in 2017 because I, I believed you and I was counting on you keeping your commitment.
Yeah, be, before I, you know, I bought that place, you know, I emailed to everybody in Neighborhood Association. And that time, everybody said yes. And they said, there is one guy, you know, really opposing the, their liquor license in that place. And they gave the Dave Singel's name, you know, and, and I talked to Dave and he gave me that, uh, the letter, so you gotta, you gotta sign, if you sign this one, then-
I understand. And he had a different attorney who may not have given, you know, all of us attorneys, we don't always give the best advice. I think you've got, you've got an attorney that has made some commitments and that also lives in the neighborhood. So, I think, you know, you might be her client, but she's gonna hold you to promises that she stood up here and made with you, right? So, I need you to though, make sure you understand, you've gotta follow, you've gotta follow your commitment because you're making a commitment to the city council, but you're also making a commitment to the neighborhoods, to the neighborhood associations, to the people that live around you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
I, you know, like, I really love my neighborhood, you know, it doesn't-
Can I, can I get a yes or a no?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I really love my neighborhood. It doesn't matter, you know, I, whether I get the liquor license or not, but I love that neighborhood, 'cause I'm a family person and it is- and there's a lot of, you know, the family-oriented people live there, and I love my business, you know, like, I, they always help me, and they love me so much, you know, that's, and that's, like, six years, you know, I've been doing really good and making all, like, one families, you know, it doesn't matter, you know, I get a liquor license or not, but I'm not going to give up that place, you know, so that's my goal is, you know.
Okay, well, I want you to have a successful business, and I hope-
Thank you.
And I would suggest start attending, I would start attending the meetings of the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association, I mean, it's not a, "I joined the Neighborhood Association", it's, "Do I participate in the Neighborhood Association?", right? So just start attending their meetings, get on their email list-
Yes, yes.
And just start attending the, the, the regular meetings.
Yes, I'll do that.
Everyone, just attend it, right? And then, you'll become in even, it'll even be better for your business.
Yeah, yes.
I heard four hundred members, so, um, I, that's, that's how you join a Neighborhood Association, it's not an application process where it's, you're accepted or not, you just start participating and start attending the meetings and get on the email list, okay?
Yeah.
All right, well, um, I appreciate that, thank you for coming up and, and personally committing, um, to the conditions that we put on here, and I, I hope you stick to these conditions.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President.
I just clear, I spoke to Councilmember Harding, and this, thanks, Councilmember Melton, it's not an amendment, but it's just the conditions of the original item.
Correct.
Thanks for understood, I got confused on that, but I understand now, thanks.
Thanks. So I haven't spoken yet, because I wanted to hear some of these comments and opinions and thoughts, uh, you can sit down if you want, I don't have a question for you. But I have a long history with this, too, uh, I, I was also on the council at the time, and while this is Mr. Bailey's district, uh, and Mr. Jaram's district at the time, it is pretty close to mine, too, and so I had, and received a lot of the same concerns, and, I do generally follow the council members' recommendations from that district, and I did at that time, and also found it very concerning that we were back here just a year later, uh, with trying to amend those conditions, and felt strongly that, um, that was not the right thing to do, or to even be suggesting at that time, and voted against them. So, um, when this came back up, you know, created a lot of mixed feelings for me, too. Uh, I will note that, um, Ms. Kavanaugh is not a liquor licensed attorney, um, I think it's notable that she's here representing the client today, um, I think she's here as a neighborhood person and a friend, and someone who cares about this business, not because it's her profession to do so. There was also mention of the Dundee, um, Abe's, um, gas station, that's also a neighborhood fixture, um, they actually support this, um, uh, being upgraded today, I think they see it as just a, you know, a fair thing to do. In many respects, the conditions that were just kind of worked out are a little bit, actually more, a little stronger than what we have here in front of us today, or that you had to comply with previously, realizing you would have some expansion of products you can sell, but the closure time, I think, is a big deal, that might be your standard practice, but having that on paper is a big deal, uh, for the concerns that we used to hear about, and that have been expressed, uh, for a long period of time, and I do agree also with the notion that, you know, that was six years ago, and there hasn't been any, violations since then, or any serious concerns, and in the meantime, that corner and that neighborhood has changed with some new condos right there, and new, new tenants across the street, um, and a new restaurant, so it is a bit of a different equation, I think, in my opinion. So, I, I do have mixed feelings about it, but, um, I appreciate the opinions of all the council members today, I think they're all trying to do the right thing, and I don't see any further lights. There is a motion to approve, and a second with those conditions. Roll call.
Johnson.
Okay, so just for clarification, the motion is to agree to terms in exchange for the council to make the recommendation to support the license, correct?
The, uh, the motion is to approve the Class D license with the conditions that were outlined.
Right. So that's the motion?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Begley?
No.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Um, yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item thirteen, resolution-
Thank you.
Item thirteen, resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Redwood Honeysuckle, located northeast of two-hundred-third Street and Honeysuckle Drive, planning board and planning department, recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirteen is today, pro- proponents, please.
Uh, hello, Mr. President and members of the council, my name is John Coolidge with Lampard and Airson, I'm the engineer for the project, I'm here on behalf of Redwood Apartment Homes, uh, we submitted a P U D and preliminary plat that went to planning board in December, and the preliminary plat has moved forward to you, the P U D and final plat will appear to you, uh, after we submit all, submit all the final plat, so, this is here so that we can submit the final plat for the project, which is, will be Redwood's, uh, fourth project in the metro area, uh, third in Omaha, it's, uh, two hundred units that we're proposing there, so, uh, look forward to your support and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Motion a second, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Begley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item fourteen, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Coventry, replat seventeen, located northwest of two-hundred-fourth and Harrison Streets, planning board and planning department, recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number fourteen is today, proponents, please.
Kyle Hawsey with E and A Consulting Group, one-one-nine-zero-nine Mill Valley Road, represent- representing the applicant, along with myself, the applicant is in the audience as well, I'll make myself available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Roe?
Aye.
Begley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug? Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item fifteen, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Simple Foundation, located at three-zero-zero-three Q Street, planning board and planning department, recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number fifteen is today, proponents, please.
Hello, uh, Mr. President and council members, I'm Michael Olden with Erhard Griffin and Associates, three-five-five-two Farnham Street, um, the applicant is here as well, happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you for all your help so far.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion a second, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Roe?
Aye.
Begley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item sixteen, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Elk Valley Commercial, located southeast of two-hundred-fourth and West Dodge Road, planning board and planning department, recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number sixteen is today, proponents, please.
Hi, uh, Andrew Rec with Foley Shald Engineering, one-four-five-zero-three Grover Street, uh, here as representative for the applicant, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Roe?
Aye.
Begley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item seventeen through twenty-one can be considered together for Cherry Creek, located west of one-hundred-third Street and Blair High Road, planning board and planning department, recommend approval. Item seventeen and eighteen, ordinances to rezone this property from D R District to R Four District and R Six District. Item nineteen, an ordinance to approve a P U D overlay district. Item twenty, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item twenty-one, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items seventeen through twenty-one are today, proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, Happy New Year, everybody, Brent Beller, one-one-four-zero, West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant, uh, with me today is Kyle Hawsey with E and A Consulting, uh, here for any questions on the final plat, which substantially conforms with the preliminary plat.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Mr. Roe, you're recognized.
Are the, you know, when I was looking at the plans, there's multifamily and then attached, single family, is this similar to the Redwood, where it's an all-for-rent, or are some of the houses townhomes for sale?
So, good question, um, it's actually, let me pull out a map here, that's easier. So, here's the property, once we get dialed in here, um, we're actually doing this in phases, and, and when we first presented this before you all, we, we mentioned this, so this to the, this is Highway one-thirty-one on the east side, this is all-for-rent, multifamily, uh, the future phases, which would be this up here, on the west side, and then right here, this is another phase, we don't know, is the honest answer, tho- those could be for sale, they could be rent, in this market, they don't know, so that's why we're focusing on doing Phase One, which is all multifamily, there is some single family, I should mention, part of the, the plat you're approving today, there's, I think there's seven lots right here, that'll be single-family homes, everything else, um, on Phase Two, we're just not sure yet.
Thank you. Thank you, no further lights, is there a motion? Motion a second, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Roe?
Aye.
Begley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item twenty-two, a resolution to approve the proposed community redevelopment area in extremely blighted area designations for the area generally bounded by Mason Street on the north, Interstate eighty on the south, the Union Pacific Railline on the east, and the Field Club Recreational Trail on the west, is communication in opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-two is today, proponents, please.
Uh, yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, um, this item asks you to designate a portion of South Omaha, uh, as both a CRA and an EBA, I'm using some acronyms today throughout this presentation, so that might be a good place to start, uh, CRA is a community redevelopment area, that's a designated area that allows redevelopment projects to apply for assistance from our TIF program, and TIF is Tax Increment Financing. Uh, the other acronym is EBA, and that stands for an extremely blighted area, it's an additional designation on top of a CRA that allows for a tw- longer TIF financing term, a twenty-year term rather than a fifteen-year term, and also provides homebuyers with a five-thousand-dollar income tax credit if they buy a house for their primary residence. Just to put things in context, this map shows the existing designated community redevelopment areas within the city of Omaha, um, the gold star is the area that we are focusing with this agenda item presently, uh, so it's, it's a fairly large expanse of areas, a number of designations have been made over the years, um, primarily our older neighborhoods, older portions of the city of Omaha, primarily east of seventy-second Street. Okay, we launched this study, CRA study, uh, EBA study, in response to a request from Patrick Mason, who has assembled a development team that is working to redevelop, uh, property that is presently occupied by the, uh, tall grain elevators, the silos, concrete silos, at thirty-fourth and Vinton, and another parcel just to the north, so they're looking at parcels on either side of Vinton, uh, near I eighty. This is a view of the parcel to the north, metal skin pole barn buildings, and this is one you're probably all pretty familiar with, it's the silos. I'm going to begin by talking about the CRA designation, then talk about the EBA. For CRA, Community Redevelopment Area Designation, uh, state law, um, calls these areas blighted and substandard, state law has detailed, um, definitions for both of these terms, and also specify the criteria for meeting those terms, uh, you have a CRA study, EBA study in your packets, also published for the public, it contains both of those definitions, along with, uh, a detailed description of how the study area, the subject area, does indeed comply with those definitions. We use three census block groups for the study area, uh, this, these two in Census Track thirty-four-oh-two, and a block group in Census Track thirty-three, block group two. Our study area determined that this, pardon me, our study determined that the study area does indeed meet those two definitions in state law, and does qualify for the CRA designation. It meets the definition Part B of blighted, because of per capita income of twenty-one-thousand dollars is lower than the city's overall thirty-six-thousand-dollar per capita income, it meets it because the unemployment rate of six-point-six-five percent exceeds the threshold of a hundred-twenty percent of the state unemployment rate, state unemployment rate is three-point-nine. Average age of structures exceed, exceeds forty years of age, that's an under threshold or criteria, in this case, the buildings are about a hundred years or more older in terms of average age. The area also meets the CRA, uh, definition for blighted Part A and substandard, in that, um, you know, at more than a hundred years of age, the buildings are showing some wear and tear, showing a little bit of, uh, uh, wear and tear, based on our windshield survey, looking at assessors' records for building conditions, about thirty-five percent of the buildings are below average, that would be a fair, poor, or worn-out category, and overall, the infrastructure's a little older. And again, the study area meets the criteria for an extremely blighted area, in that the poverty rate is twenty-point-one percent, and that exceeds a threshold rate of twenty percent, so it complies, and an unemployment rate of six-point-six-five, we talked about previously, it also exceeds two-hundred percent of the statewide rate, um, so the s- two-hundred percent of the three-point-nine statewide rate is six-point-five-nine percent. In terms of the recommendation for designation, rather than recommending the entire study area, we are looking at recommending a slightly smaller area, and this is a study area, this is the area recommended for designation, we have eliminated a very cohesive, uniform, homogeneous, single-family neighborhood, because there's very little opportunity for economic redevelopment projects in that area. I'd also like to note, for those at home, our TIF website and the city planning department has a, um, has a slideshow, uh, with, um, the entire process and criteria for CRAs and EBA's laid out. In any event, the portion of the study area we are recommending for designation does comply with state law, and we ask for your approval, uh, of these designations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today?
Louis, who matters, twenty-seven-oh-nine Dewey Avenue. I, uh, support the, uh, designation, however, and, uh, Mr. Seaton explained it well, uh, but, uh, you know, even though we're familiar with this area, the grain elevator's there, the community's trying to figure out what to do with that structure, what to do with, uh, the community area there, so the CRA map, I disagree with, that's my issue, you see this map? There's no holes, this area should look like Swiss cheese, where the city has been working at it for forty years, and you're coming back to the CRA map and recognizing successes and removing areas that aren't no longer blighted. So that, I guess that's my piece, thanks.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Patrick Mason, one-one-five-zero-six Nicholas Street, Suite two-hundred, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-five-four. My name is Patrick Mason, 11506 Nicholas Street, Suite 200, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154. I'm here as a member of the ownership and development team of both of the properties that initiated the request for the CRA and EBA designation, initiated the study, and now what we're asking for in the designation. Just here to voice my support and gratitude for all the work that's been done in the process, and address any questions you have.
Thank you. Any other proponents to number 22? See, not any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
Good afternoon. I just have a couple of things to say real quick. Can somebody quickly explain to me how an individual would get the $5,000 credit on the EBA for a single-family home purchase? There's a $5,000 tax credit?
It's, you know, I haven't done it myself, so I can't tell you the exact process, but it is a Nebraska income tax, the state of Nebraska state income tax credit. And my understanding is, I believe it can be carried over a few years. You do it as part of filing your Nebraska state tax. You do have to have purchased the home after it is designated, after it's in an area that's been designated as an EBA, and it needs to be your primary residence. In other words, only for owner occupants. But it's a $5,000 state income tax credit, and I'm not sure exactly the process for claiming it, but either a CPA, your tax preparer, H&R Block, or State Department of Revenue-
Or Maccusie.
Could probably help you. I'm in an EBA myself with my home, but unfortunately, the designation came after I bought the house, so it goes.
But it's a tax credit off an individual's filing for the state taxes.
For the state tax, yes.
And it may be carried over several years, is the assumption.
Yes, I should probably know that figure, but I don't, my apologies.
Okay.
It is a good benefit.
Anything for an individual who's buying a personal residence, any assistance and help is always greatly appreciated by people, and knowing it's there is even a greater asset.
Yeah, the Extremely Blighted Area Designation was created by the legislature primarily to emphasize affordable housing and housing. Even though I can't claim it on my house, if my neighbor's house sells, it's a little more likely that a homeowner will buy it rather than a landlord. If you're going to build a Lytec-assisted affordable housing apartment complex, and you're applying for the competitive Lytec credits, you get a little extra consideration in your application if it's within an EBA. So it's a good program for housing and affordable housing.
That's a very good point. I look forward to the redevelopment of the grain elevators. I don't think without TIF, and if we don't have the CRA designation or the EBA designation, there will be no tax increment financing. And on projects like this, these developers need all the incentive they can get, because there's plenty of shovel-ready property out there. But to take on something like this, I think it's a very least the city can do to try to promote that redevelopment. And so I'm definitely going to vote to support this. The only thing I, Mr. President, before I finish, I just want to acknowledge that we did receive one communication from my constituency opposing this, and it was from Jenny Sinewicki. I just want to publicly acknowledge that we did receive that. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you. Don, you mentioned the elimination of a small portion of, I think you used the word cohesive single-family residences. That didn't change the calculations of the numbers that qualified, made it qualify for CRA and EBA designations, correct?
Correct. The study area is a larger area, and the entire study area meets the criteria and can be designated. And once you reach that threshold in the entire, let's say it's a census tract. If an entire census tract qualifies, then we look at future development potential, and you can designate the entire tract or just a portion of it, and that's permissible.
Which is what you've done in this case.
Which is what we've done. If I can give you maybe an even more detailed map of that particular block group, it's just wall-to-wall, no open space, no open lots, vacant lots, wall-to-wall, single-family, and really not a lot of opportunity for economic redevelopment projects, other than that industrial corner.
Okay. The only other question I had was, and this is a little bit in reference to what Mr. Hug just brought up with the letter of opposition that was submitted. I know that there were some questions as to, I guess, the process of the designations, and I think you walked, you told us or educated us really on that process. And I would say that, I know it's not just kind of a rubber stamp when a request is made by, you know, a potential development or developer to do a development. I mean, there, I know of many instances where that's been requested, the city, and the city has come back and gave the thumbs down, as you just indicated, on whether or not it would, it would qualify for a CRA or an EBA. So I just want people to understand, too, that these are not kind of rubber-stamped, and that there's a great deal of investigation that goes into the process to decide whether or not these qualify for those designations. And so I wish the developers in this case, if this passes, all the success, because it's certainly an area that needs redevelopment, and to take advantage of the tools that are available, I think makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding. Hug.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Johnson Epstein. Consent Agenda, any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on agenda items 23 through 29 were held on December 19th. I don't see any further lights, is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Um, yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Hug.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items 30 through 69 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, if you are a proponent or an opponent. These are items 30 through 69.
Good afternoon. City Council, Omaha, Nebraska. I'd like to take this opportunity to make a point here.
What item are you speaking to?
All of them, sir, as I mention them, because this is why we have been trying, this hurry-up-and-wait in government, that statement, hurry-up-and-wait. This is why we need a United States Department of Agriculture office in Omaha. We have been here since 2:00, and all we have covered is liquor. So if you folks would bring a United States Department of Agriculture in Omaha, it would be very beneficial to the people of North Omaha.
All right. Thank you, Don. Any other testimony on these items?
I'm proponent for 42, which is the service, professional service agreement with Benesh. You know, when you have an inspector go out, you depend on the individual inspector for qualifying some things, and Benesh, I think, has demonstrated that they qualify, or they're capable of performing the professional services asked by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items?
Good afternoon. My name is Alfie Pettis. I'm the general manager at Red Robin, 14455, West Maple Road, 68116. And I'm here to get the liquor license switched over from Spring Rupert to my name.
Okay, thank you. So that's item number 30, right?
Correct.
All right. Thanks.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Unless there's questions, I don't see any. Any other testifiers on these items? Public hearing is closed, Mr. Rowe.
Resolution is to appoint Spring Rupert. Has that been changed?
We, so we have to consider the application that's in front of us. If there's a new manager application, they have to file it with the Liquor Control Commission before it can come back to us.
Okay, so you understand that?
I'm sorry. Come on down. Yeah.
So council can only take action on the application that's before us?
Okay.
So if there's a new manager, you have to file that with the Liquor Control Commission.
Okay, is there an application I need to, she told me to come down here, and I don't know what I was supposed to do, but come down here and get it switched over, so I'm unfamiliar with this process, so.
So they can take action on the application before us, and then if you want to submit an application in the future, you would have to start with the Liquor Control Commission.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hold on. I got the light up.
Okay, Ms. Melton.
I just want to make it clear, because you came down and said you-
You were asking us to switch it. What we're voting on today is to appoint Spring Rupert. Is Spring Rupert the manager at Red Robin right now?
She is the regional manager.
She's the regional manager?
Correct.
So that hasn't changed?
That has not changed.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that we weren't appointing somebody that didn't work for Red Robin anymore.
No, no, I'm the new general manager of the location. The liquor license was in her name previously. I have taken over the store now, so the liquor license was supposed to go from her name to my name, because I am the GM of the store.
It's going to be in her name right now.
Okay.
As of today, so.
I'll let her know that.
All right.
All right.
All right, well, thank you, I'm glad you're managing. We frequent Red Robin, so I'll come up and see you.
I'll be seeing you there.
You got some good burgers.
We do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll do a motion to approve items 30 through 69.
Motion in a second to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 70, an ordinance to approve the accretion of an inland port authority, A is amendment of the whole requested by the Law Department, B is communication and support, C is communication in opposition.
Vote on item number 70 is today. Ms. Johnson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've submitted something in writing that I've issued to the clerk. As the City Councilwoman for this district, I'm going to assert my opposition to the City of Omaha Committee and Board, to the City of Omaha Committee and Board Appointments, emphasizing concerns relating to equity and inclusion. So on, to support that notion, there was an article submitted by Jessica Wade this past year in 2023, and I'm just going to take an insert from her conversation in the article, because it kind of fits well with my stance on board appointments. And now, I kind of sense that everybody thinks that maybe perhaps I'm not aware of what's before us, but let me assure you that I am aware of that. This municipal inland port authority comes with a statement of appointing nine members of the board, which will then in turn come back to this body whereby we will be appointing or ratifying the recommendation of the mayor. So again, I'm very clear on what's before us. Back in 2020, the wake of George Floyd's murder by a Minneapolis police officer, the City of Omaha pledged to expand diverse representation on city boards and commission. Nearly three years later, however, it appears little change has been made to change and ensure equity and inclusion of members on these boards. Again, I'm standing in opposition of this ordinance today based on that merit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Just, I would never question the Law Department, but I did have a question on this. The amendment of the whole, my understanding usually is the amendment of the whole replaces the whole document. What we're really doing is just replacing the maps that are included in the amendment into the body of the document.
Maccusie Law Department, that's correct. The amendment to the whole reflects a change in the map of the boundaries of the district, which differed from when the ordinance was originally put on file, but I believe that the map was referenced in the ordinance.
In the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on that.
Thank you. We talked a lot about this item, you know, several weeks ago now, but a few things I just wanted to repeat today, since it's been a few weeks, and this is a different action for us that we haven't taken before in terms of the potential of establishing a municipal inland port authority, is that if we took this action today, this does not establish one, we would have to apply to the Department of Economic Development, and they would need to approve this application. I just wanted to make that clear. I'm sure that would be the intent if we did today, but that is the process by which one of these would need to be established under state law. And then, number two, we talked a little bit about what these do and what these don't do, but I think that is worth repeating. I have had some questions since then about that from some constituents and some citizens in the area, and that is that it can acquire and own and lease property and sell property, and it can borrow from lenders, or from the state, or from the federal government, and it can receive appropriations or grants, but it does not have the power of eminent domain, and it does not have taxing authority. I think that's important to reemphasize. I had some questions about that since our last meeting. It does not have those powers. And it is open to the Open Meetings Act. It would be a public body, and we need to operate the same way we do here in terms of publishing its meetings and having public dialogue and public hearings. Part of the context last time also was, is this a potential vehicle for an airport industrial park that's been talked about with the state? I think that's unlikely. I think the state will likely pursue its own process that it has already initiated in that respect, but it could still be worthwhile to initiate a port authority for other reasons or for other opportunities. And the last thing I'd mention, and it was regarding the amendment of the whole and changing the map, there was an individual here last time, and was here earlier, but has also left this time, that just had the question about Levi Carter Park. Technically, Levi Carter-
I don't see, didn't see behind the screen here.
You're welcome to say a word if you'd like, but I know we talked afterwards, and I think the concern was Levi Carter Park was in the map, but your question was, can that be developed? And the answer is, no, it cannot, because park property, that's been designated park property cannot be developed upon. But if you'd like to say your name and address and provide some remarks, you're welcome to do that since we missed you last time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I know why the Carter Lake Park is included in the plan. And my name is Tom Foster. I live at 5215 North Sixth Street, and I'm an environmentalist, basically. Carter Lake Park, I think, was included in the map to satisfy the requirement for a 300-acre parcel. Without the park, I don't think you have 300 acres. Now, I'm not that worried, you know, and I talked to you about it, and the thing that scares me a little bit is they just put in a new pickleball court restaurant and bar in a city park. That was just okay by the mayor two weeks ago, so. Development does occur in city parks, and if some development occurred in Carter Lake Park, a small amount, I don't think it would be the end of the world. But my concern is the term industrial sites. For zoning purposes, we have light industrial, and we have heavy industrial, and we had a huge brew- a huge brewer twenty-five years ago about a proposal to put a medical waste incinerator in our neighborhood, just blocks away from Sherman School, and that's eight hundred elementary school students. And having polluting enterprises in a river valley is very dangerous, because river valleys are the most air temperature inversion pieces of real estate you can find. And, you know, cold air gets trapped right at the ground level, along with all the pollutants from the airport and automobiles and trucks and everything. And these pollutants get trapped right at ground level where people live and operate. And these issues came to the fore during the struggle to stop the incinerator project. And we're just concerned that if we put in, if we don't put the requirement in that heavy industry isn't allowed to develop in a residential neighborhood, we could get our own Nebraska version of Cancer Alley down in Louisiana, and we really don't need that or want it. But although I sound like an opponent to this project, I am a proponent. I just want a few things changed, like the requirement for industrial sites. Light industrial, we're living with that right now, and it's fine. But heavy industrial has a lot of things to worry about. And, and there's no mention of the environmental impact of putting in, you know, a bunch of polluters all in the same place. But I love the idea that vacant properties could be put into our neighborhood. And these properties need to be developed for an efficient delivery of city services. When you have vast tracts of property that are unused and underutilized in the city, anywhere within the city limits, it increases the cost of garbage collection, snow removal, street, sewer maintenance, police and fire protection. A compact city makes all those expenses much more, the delivery of all those services much more efficient. So I'm not opposed to development, and there's a lot of large vacant areas that could be developed inside this map. What we don't want is a bunch of heavy industry moving in and becoming our new neighbors. And as Juanita Johnson mentioned, is there's going to be a board that's going to run this. And there's no mention of the need to have an activist from the black or Hispanic communities or from the neighborhood, or, and that's, like she says, it's going against what we're trying to improve, get a more responsive bureaucracy that looks like the people that are being affected by their policies. And so I'm for this, and I'm against certain parts of it. You know, I think we need to say light industrial, that term needs to be in this, and, yeah, I think that's it. You know, if some of this, part of Carter Lake Park is no longer being maintained, this is the northeast part of the park, they've quit mowing it. I mean, it looks like it's getting ready for a, you know, something to be developed. I just hope it's not a steel mill, or a smelter, or a foundry, or a municipal waste incinerator, or, you know, I think if, and I'm sorry I wasn't here for the public hearing last week. It was, you know, I got an agenda, and it was two hundred and four on the agenda list, and so I sat through the whole meeting waiting for it to come up. So I just want to thank Ms. Johnson for letting me get up here and, have I say, and I've got a copy of my main concerns, not a whole lot of concerns, but simple, easy reading. And I think if you revisited the vote on this maybe next week after you've had a look at this and see if, talk to Justin Wade, see if he would mind putting light industrial in there and a ban on heavy industry moving into our quiet little neighborhood, that would be great. And the fact that there's no eminent domain, as long as you sustain that requirement in there, people won't be getting their property seized, because that really, that really breaks down morale. And there's some people down there that would happily sell their properties to somebody that wants to put in a large facility. And we need jobs. You know, there's a lot of people in our neighborhood that want a job. But because the bus system only runs a bus through there three times a day, there's just no way to get the workers out of our neighborhood and off to the west Omaha where the jobs are. Now, if the jobs would come to east Omaha, that would really be great. And there's a lot of people that would love to be employed, so.
Thank you.
That's it. And thank you again for giving me the chance to speak.
Thanks for coming back. We appreciate it.
Okay.
And I do, by the way, agree with your comments about board members and Ms. Johnson's comments about board members. They do need to be diverse, and I think we do need to do a better job with our boards and commissions overall. And we did commit to that at the time, and we're still not measuring that progress, which I think is problematic for me, too.
If, I tried getting ahold of Justin Wade and the other state senator. I sent him an email, you know, but if they wouldn't mind tweaking this plan just a little bit, and then vote on it maybe next week. But even if you vote on it the way it is, it's progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is for our city attorney, Matt Koozie. The attached ordinance, I'm reading this from your attachment. The attached ordinance approves a designated of inland port district as shown on Exhibit One of the attached ordinance. And, that means included, and the creation of an inland port authority and a governing board. Again, I stand in opposition to the makeup of this board as it currently would consist of the recommendation of the mayor of nine members, and then come back in front of us to vote on it. So we have been somewhat, there's been some discussion back and forth regarding whether or not I know, or if I understand that the map is a part of this. But the voting of this also includes, otherwise you wouldn't have, the word "and" in the first paragraph of this law department letter. So, Mr. Koozie, can you explain to me what you mean by this first paragraph?
Maccusie Law Department, are you referring to the ordinance itself or the cover?
Yeah, the one, yeah, that's the one that says Honorable President and members of the council.
Okay, the cover letter.
Yes. What does that mean?
That means that the ordinance is creating the inland port authority district and will result in the creation of an inland port authority board should the state approves our application.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Actually, the only thing I was going to mention is that the reference that the mayor just approved a development within Tranquility Park is incorrect. It's called Tranquility Commons, which is basically adjacent to or nearby Tranquility Park. It is not parkland. It just shares the name of the park.
Correct. Okay. No further lights. Is there a motion? There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call. Member of the whole, right, Mr. Rowe?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item seventy-one, a resolution to approve the bid in the amount of three million eight hundred five thousand nine hundred dollars to Alcorn West Construction, Inc., for new construction of the Manden Park Nature Center and Shelters.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-one is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the city council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Thought I'd bring up a couple of visuals in regards to what we are planning for this project. I will tell you, this is actually the second bid that we went through after initially receiving bids back. On the first package, came in well over budget, so we did some value engineering and are presenting what we have here today, ARPA-related, so we've heard a little bit about this. In this case, to readdress the goal and vision of this project, very similar to Hummel Park and the nature center we have there, the camp that is our most popular of the camps that we have, that are all full for the most part each summer, creating some additional opportunity for 2025, when this is scheduled to open now, to have that be available as an additional opportunity for the community here in the southeast corner of the city. So the first image here, coming in from the south part of the park, and you can see the building there on the right. This next image is we drive in around, and we can see below some of the maintenance area and the viewing from inside the facility. View now down from the bottom around back, this walkway that you see right here leads down to our camp area and where we'll have the various pavilions or shelters where the campers will be located. And an aerial here to give a little more of the feel of that entire area and the way we'll be planning to develop through this proposal, and some of what you see leading down to that area below where campers will have that nature experience. So again, on track for major construction to be this season, carrying over into twenty-five, a deadline to be active by approximately the end of the first quarter twenty-five, so we can do our final preparations for hosting those campers. Exciting project.
Great.
Happy to answer any other questions.
Appreciate those visuals and that overview. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Koozie. I'm sorry, Matt, please. I just have a question. This is beautiful, lots of opportunity as it relates to providing something for an outlet for children and kids. The only question or concern that I have is that in my community, it is very difficult and challenging for children to travel to this distance, to have access to that. Has there been any thought regarding how they will be able to benefit from this beautiful service that the city will be providing here at this?
Yes, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for that question. We do provide transportation to our camps from various specific locations around the city so that people do have the opportunity to take advantage of that service, to get to the different locations we offer. For this season coming up in 2024, we'll have our Hummel Camp, as I mentioned. We'll have our Zirinsky Camp. We'll also have our Adams Camp in north Omaha, and then we'll have a full eight-week session at Hanscom Park. That location is the one that will essentially pick up the footprint of in twenty-five and move down to Manden, from twenty-four and move down to Manden in twenty-five. So we do offer that service. As far as north Omaha is concerned specifically, obviously the Adams Camp, very specific to that area, and the Hummel location hopefully is one that we'll still be able to work with people who are interested in getting involved with, on having that opportunity this year before we even expand that opportunity to transport people around to these other opportunities in twenty-five.
So I can explain to my community that in order to benefit from the pickleball that will be at Tranquility Park, that they will have some, we're not having Tran, oh, that's not the case?
No. It's a private business. It's opening across the street from Tranquility.
Is that correct?
That is true. Yes.
So how will, how will, how will transportation help with this?
With the Manden Park project in particular? It, we will have specific locations to pick up and transport people to the camp program in the summer for both this year upcoming for those four locations I mentioned, and then newly in twenty-five, this location that we're constructing, that our Hanscom location will move over and essentially, the Manden location will take over for Hanscom in twenty-five upon completion of the facility. And those transportation options are made available, and we have information that will be coming out actually soon for twenty-four. Similar opportunities would be available then in twenty-five.
So that information will be posted?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion?
So, of course. So Lou.
Motion of second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
I.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item seventy-two, a resolution to approve the reappointment of Michael Pete to the planning board.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? There's a motion of second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
I.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seventy-three, a resolution to approve the reappointment of Jay Lunn to the Board of Directors for the Regional Metropolitan Transit Authority.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-three is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion of second to approve. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
All right, I have previously submitted that resolution seventy-one, seventy, I'm sorry, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four. I have it on record here that I am standing in assertion in opposition to these board appointments, or these appointments, reappointments, board appointments to committees and boards based upon the concern as it relates to our commitment as a city to respond to equity and inclusion, something that we committed to during the George Floyd incident. And three years later, we still have not seen much traction as it relates to these appointments. So again, although I just voted yes, that was an error, but the answer should have been no, and I will be doing no for number seventy-three.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harding.
Actually, I was going to ask that when Mrs. Johnson brought that up, I was going to, I think there's a process by which you can change your vote if you'd like to do that.
Well, I appreciate your humble advice, but I'm not a flip-flopper, so I will stand by that. And I will, again, I have it on record that, and I have a document here that states what my intent was.
Thank you. I would just note before we take a vote on number seventy-three that I believe this is probably our last appointment as a city council to the Regional Metropolitan Transit Authority. Something that has not been discussed a lot, seems to me publicly, is that the Metro Board has pursued becoming what's called a Regional Metropolitan Transit Authority, and that these positions will now be on the ballot for voters to decide starting in May. So that's important for folks to know, and important for folks who might be interested in running for these positions, that this is probably the last time we'll have this on our agenda. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President.
And thanks for clarifying that as well. I have met with Mr. Lunn on several occasions and gotten a pretty good background education when I got on the council on metro and transit authority issues. So I'll be supporting his appointment today because I think he brings good knowledge, and he's been helpful to me as my transition when I got on the city council. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Yeah, I would agree. I think when we're making
I think when we're making these board appointments, I look at experience and dedication to, to the city. And I think Mr. Lund, who has lived here his whole life, I've actually known him since he was in kindergarten, he actually has dedicated himself to development and to this community. And by the way, these board positions, he, he's very busy. He does a lot in his job, yet he's willing to volunteer because these board appointments are volunteer positions that take up a lot of time. So actually, I admire all three of the people that are on here today, Mr. Pate, Mr. Dobie and, and Mr. Lund, for their willingness and their dedication to our city. And I, I guess I'm going to vote for people based on their experience and their dedication and what they've shown that they're willing to do for the citizens of Omaha. I'm not going to base their appointments on the color of their skin. So I will, and that's how I look for every single appointment. I don't look at somebody's gender, gender identification or color of skin. I think that if you care about our community and you have the right experience and you want to participate in these boards, then that should be what is considered and that goes for everyone. So I, I want to thank Mr. Lund for kind of carrying out this transit, transit authority until the end of the year, until the voters will now vote for. I have, I don't even know if he's running. I don't know if he wants to do that, but I appreciate his dedication to the board so far in getting us through the rest of the year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to be clear that my comments have nothing to do with color of skin. It has everything to do with our commitment to do inclusion and equity. When we have these appointments, these individuals have been given an opportunity to come before this board and, and before the community so that they are able to answer questions so that we can determine whether or not they qualify or have the ability to complete the task at hand. When these appointments and the people that we recommend do not show up, it does not give the opportunity for those questions to be asked. It's great for some members of this city council to have relationships with the recommendation, but that does not give the opportunity for community members and others to understand what their qualifications are. It does not give me an opportunity to do due process in my decision-making. So no, Mr. Lund, I'm not seeing whatsoever that he's not qualified. I don't know that. But I'm not able to determine that based upon the fact that I'm not able to ask him any questions today as with any of these commitments or appointees that are being presented to this board with no one coming before this body to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item seventy-four, a resolution to approve the reappointment of Scott Dobie to the Landmarks Heritage Preservation Commission.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-four is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion to approve in a second. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I stand in opposition of this appointment.
Thank you. No further lights, roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item seventy-five, an ordinance to acquire private property for the F Street, 156th Street to 144th Street, pavement improvements and panel repair.
Public hearing on number seventy-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Rouser on this. Thanks for hanging, hanging around. You're probably an hour thirty here and appreciate you being here for that. Can you kind of just go over the scope of work if we were to approve this, this ordinance today? What, what's the scope of work look like for that project?
Sure, Austin Rouser, Public Works Department. This is one of our street preservation bond projects. Essentially, we have a non-standard pavement on F Street. That's a collector roadway. And so through the infrastructure rehabilitation project and the CIP with those street preservation bond funds, we're taking non-standard roadways and upgrading some of those into standard roadways, similar to what we did with Grover Street, I Street. And so this, this F Street project is, is an example of that where an existing two-lane asphalt county road section is being upgraded to a concrete curving gutter two-lane section with some turn lanes and some, some sidewalks and other appurtenances. That's essentially what the project entails. I, I know that some of the intersections at times will have right-of-way needs where we have a new ADA ramp that's going in and we need to acquire some property for that to fit within right-of-way.
Yeah, that was my primary question because it seems like it's a really wide right-of-way there already. I didn't see the need to really acquire much, but if you're talking about small slice for an ADA, ADA ramp, I can understand that.
That's correct. I don't foresee a need for a lot of right-of-way associated with the project and some of it could just be construction easements for access and whatnot. There, as, as you mentioned, there is a large segment that contemplated the hill getting cut down there to, to change some of the site distance that was plotted with the, the property development. So there is a significant amount of property there, shouldn't be very much need.
Do you know how far they're going to cut that hill? That, that hill is steep and dangerous.
Right, so we have, the state specifies what the rate of change of the, the slope can be, that, that curvature, those vertical curves. And so there'll be several feet that'll be cut down to improve site distance there.
Okay. Any idea about a start date as far as construction? I know we're not talking about that right now.
You know, I'm not sure where utility coordination is. I think, I think we're, we're hoping to get construction done in twenty-five. So we'll look at preparation in twenty-four and construction in twenty-five.
Okay. Great, thank you. And again, appreciate the work that your crews have done over the last few days. I know it's, it was an event and you guys stepped right up. Appreciate that.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Yep.
Thank you. Next item.
Item seventy-six, an ordinance to acquire private property for the northeast Omaha High Rate Treatment Basin and associated projects.
Public hearing on number seventy-six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item seventy-seven, an ordinance to approve a non-exclusive public road license agreement with Orion Network Services.
Public hearing on number seventy-seven is today. We have to proponent by Zoom. Mr. Weiser, floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Matt Weiser. I'm an outside plant engineer at Orion and I'm here to attend in the council meeting for any questions that may, the council may have on this.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item seventy-eight, an ordinance authorizing the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Center Trophy Company to provide T-shirts for the City of Omaha Parks and Recreation Programs.
Public hearing on number seventy-eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item seventy-nine, an ordinance to approve the agreement with Hub International Great Plains for the City of Omaha Employees Retirement System Cash Balance Plan.
Public hearing on number seventy-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item eighty, an ordinance to accept the quote from CNC Technologies LLC for CNC Live Service for the Omaha Police Department Air Support Unit.
Public hearing on number eighty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item eighty-one, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Together, Inc. in the amount of $144,000 for the Crisis Engagement Hotel Motel Voucher Program.
Public hearing on number eighty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items eighty-two through one oh seven do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Your motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at four nineteen.